I could go on all day. I'll leave it at that, but if we're going to invest this kind of money, which I think is not a bad investment, I think we need to make sure that we put the right guardrails around it to ensure that people are actually getting help and not just funding new jobs by babysitting. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor King?
I would like to pin back off of what Ben, Mr. Seidler, said today. This is an opportunity for the city and all the organizations that came out against us at the last meeting regarding the camp. There's people out here who actually has gotten housing and they've been put back out because they don't have the social skills or the information how to keep their apartments and clean and stuff. So some people are getting in there, but they're back out here. And we need some services to teach them how to maintain their apartment. And I'm with Ben, you know, we have to see movement to come in here and there because we closed the camp up on December 1st, but there's no other alternative because nobody is helping, you know, and we keep taking more people in, more people in. We have to worry about what we have now because if we don't, we're going to be like California where nobody can get around nowhere because there's going to be too many people. And at this point, we need to focus on what's out there now, what's at the Life Hub now, and get that moving forward. We're willing to work with anyone, but we have to see that not just come here in a meeting to say we're doing the wrong thing or we're mean or ungodly, but that you're willing to move forward to help these people move forward. And like Ben said, it's just a paycheck for someone to babysit. That's not helping people. We need to help them get back on their feet. Now, we can help everybody and we understand that, but there is people out here that can get help and will maintain. I've seen on street moms, two people this week are in recovery and bought new cars. So it is possible to get people help and get them going. So we have to work together. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have recorded the city manager. I forgot the vice mayor.
It's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to change the subject to leaves. I've been getting a lot of phone calls and my ward and people stopping me. The city is going to be picking up the leaves in Woodsdale. You don't have to worry. It'll start tomorrow and it'll go into Thursday. So if you have any leaves that need to be picked up in Woodsdale, the truck will be there on tomorrow, Wednesday, and Thursday for two days. Thank you very much. And, you know, the homeless issue is just one of these situations where no matter what we do, people are not going to be happy with us. It's one of the, it's an unfortunate circumstance that Wheeling and the rest of the country is going through. And, you know, whatever we can do as a city council to alleviate the problem, we will do that. But please remember, we're city council members. We're not social workers. We're not on the ground floor. The only thing we can do is write basically the rules, allocate funds in ways that we think is appropriate. That's all we can do. I mean, we're trying our best here and we're open to any solutions that these service providers have. We provided that exempted area with the hopes that someone would step up and manage the camp. Numerous times, the city and service providers spoke about managing the camp, but for whatever reason, it never happened. And now here we are. There's a lot of blame that we could, I think, go around for everyone, and I understand that. But we, as we are not the only player in this. We need to come together as a community and offer some solutions, short term and long term. But we're in this together, and I got to say, the last time we were here, the tone was a lot better than two years ago. So I appreciate that very much. It's not something that I did, that went, that did not go unnoticed. But, you know, I think we need to just hopefully take a step forward together. So that's all I'll say for this part.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now we'll do the report of city manager. Mr. Herron?
Thank you, Mayor. Under original propositions this evening, item number two is an ordinance for a corrosion repair to the Ogilvy Park water tank. We had a fill pipe that corroded and it was an emergency repair, so I would respectfully request that council consider two readings on number, item number two under original propositions. Also, item number four, which is the Life Hub Salvation Army Temporary Housing Utilizing Opioid Funds. As you know, the camp is, or the exempted area is scheduled to close on December 1st. I know there's been a lot of discussion and probably will be when the ordinance comes up, but it does qualify for two readings based on that deadline if council were so inclined to do that this evening to get that funding in place so that, you know, there might be an opportunity to have that facility open by December 1st. Also, the Clay School project, council recall that a contract was awarded using U.S. EPA funds for asbestos abatement in that facility or that building. That work is completed. It was completed on Friday of last week. You also recall that we hired an engineering firm to engineer the demolition specifications for that building, which also included evaluating the back wall of the building that's holding up houses in the neighborhood as a retention, retaining wall. Happy to report that that, the engineering report came back that that wall will be sufficient to serve as a retaining wall in the event that we're able to develop that site. So that's good news and that reduces the expense of developing the site dramatically. But we are ready to bid out the demolition now of the Clay School. We did receive word that the West Virginia D-Lab program is still available to us. They are working through their various, you know, funding sources, but we're confident that we will be awarded a D-Lab grant for this demolition. It is not finalized yet, but we are confident. And the demolition is scheduled to be bid the 1st of December. So that project is moving along nicely. The asbestos abatement did come in at budget. There were no change orders associated with it. So that project, you know, went very well for us. Also wanted to comment on AEP and their efforts here the last couple of weeks in lighting issues in Wheeling, particularly downtown Wheeling. The Streetscape project, all of the overhead lights have been taken down as a result of the Streetscape project. New bases put in at different elevations, et cetera. And as you know, Main Street was pretty much done at the end of spring of this year. Market Street has continued and AEP has worked very diligently to get all of the overhead lights on Market Street up in advance of the Christmas parade, and they are all done. They're all, they are all LED lights throughout the downtown. They look great. It is well lit at night. They also replaced the, all the decorative lights in Market Plaza with LED lights. It looks great. There are also, Mr. Seidler has brought to my attention a couple of times, some issues on the freeway with their overhead, high overhead lights. They're working on those. There were three major lights that were out. I know that at least one of those is back on and possibly two. And they're also working on the, their DOH is working on the lights that illuminate the exit sign. Excuse me, on I-70. So we're pleased with those efforts. Excuse me. Also, tonight at your spot, there's an official statement for our water and sewer bond sale, which occurred last, week before last. It's a $61.7 million bond sale. We received $560 million worth of orders on the open market. As a result of that, the interest expense over the life of these bonds was reduced by a million dollars. So very pleased with the efforts there. And then finally, before I lose my voice, I did want to introduce our new, one of our new deputy police chiefs, which was appointed or started his job yesterday and was sworn in today, and that's Terry Walls. Terry's in the back of the room there. He is the deputy police chief of patrol division. He comes to us, he's a West Virginia native, but he comes to us from Virginia, has a long and distinguished career in law enforcement. So we're very pleased to have him within the police department as in charge of the patrol division. So welcome, Terry. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Is there any questions as city manager?
You want to remind the people about the December 2nd closing of Washington Avenue Bridge?
Yes. So work has begun on the Washington Avenue Bridge. AEP has line relocation, which began yesterday. They were out there working today. So there's going to be some work between now and December 2nd that will require some type of traffic control. Flaggers were out there yesterday. There were not any there today. There wasn't, there wasn't a need for them. But on December 2nd, the city's sewer contractor will place a manhole in front of the bridge. And then after that, the construction of the bridge will begin. And we do anticipate that the bridge will be closed until October of 2026.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Herron. With that then, we'll move down the agenda to the report of other officers, and we do have before us the traffic commission minutes from September 11, 2025. Is there a motion to hold those over?
So, second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that motion's approved. Moving on down the agenda, we have petitions of redress or grievance.
There are none.
Petitions of all other kinds.
There are none.
Original propositions.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Wheeling creating a 30-minute parking zone in front of 2518 Chaplain Street, Monday to Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $93,943 with Southern Corrosion Engineered Tank Care of Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina, for repairs to Ogilvy Park Water Tank to be charged to the water department.
I would move for a second reading.
I'll second.
Any discussion, any questions? If not, I'd ask you, please record your votes.
So we just need to vote on the motion for the second read first and then we'll do our votes.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion before us for a second reading. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, and we will have the second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $93,943 with Southern Corrosion Engineered Tank Care of Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina, for repairs to Ogilvy Park Water Tank to be charged to the water department.
I would move to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Now I can ask you, please record your votes.
Looks like we might need to voice vote again. Apologies.
Yeah, we'll have another voice vote for that. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, that motion's approved unanimously.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $473,149 with Caston Baker of Canonsburg, Pennsylvania, for Robrick Trailhead Project Phase 1 earthwork and planting to be charged as follows. $250,000 to EPA grant and $223,149 to the project funds. An ordinance of the council of the city of Wheeling, West Virginia, authorizing the city manager to allocate a portion of the West Virginia opioid settlement funds to assist the Life Hub and Salvation Army in Wheeling, West Virginia, for temporary housing to the unsheltered community and providing opioid-related abatement.
I'd like to amend the motion to fund the Life Hub and Salvation Army for eight weeks with the provisions councilors Seidler discussed.
Is there a second to that amendment?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? And I would defer, I would ask the city's listener, we're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. I see we have a request here for a second reading of that motion. Can we have a motion and a second for that?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. What are the benchmarks? I, I, so there's a motion to modify the ordinance. What, what, what actually will be changing? Like, what do you?
Those are the benchmarks that I outlined. How are we police, how do you?
What are the, I mean?
You said half people need to get IDs and how are we?
I don't understand. I know you, look, I, I understand and I appreciate, I just don't know how we can memorialize all that. What does that mean? I mean, we need to, I just don't understand.
I believe what we're going here is we're funding the eight weeks, so we can sit here and come up with a better plan of how to run this.
So then how much money is going to be allocated for those eight weeks? Twenty, I just want to make sure we're on the same page here. I mean, we're sort of working on the fly. So is that what it is? The amendment is to only give them $25,000 at this point?
I think that's the math for eight weeks, I believe.
Okay, and then what do they have to accomplish to get the next, I assume you're going to want to give them 25 and then another 25? Is that how you want to do it? Or are you going to give them 50 the next time? I mean?
I think that depends on the, on the proof they bring back. And what we're asking for is proof that they have applied for or started the process of getting their IDs, their social security cards, their birth certificates, right? There's an application. So 15 of the 30 people in there, we need to see at least certification that half of those individuals have started the process or the social worker, whoever the Life Hub is going to have working with those individuals. Somebody can show us that half of those individuals have started the process to capture their, to get their IDs, right? Half of those individuals have started the process to fill out the applications for the Section 8 housing vouchers.
Okay, and just so we're clear, let's back up. We're giving this money to the Life Hub so that they can operate the Salvation Army's shelter.
It's like an annex or anything.
And the Salvation Army, which, which location? Is it the one in South Wheeling or the one on 16th Street?
16th Street, right?
16th Street.
16th Street, okay, and that's the place that is.
We're basically funding the Life Hub to hire staff to work at the Salvation Army, right? To fund staff, to, you know? Yeah.
This might be an opportunity. Do we have somebody here from the Life Hub who might approach the podium and just maybe explain that and let us ask a few questions, please?
Hi, my name is Lisa Leach. I'm the shelter director at the Life Hub. Every time we get somebody new that comes into our shelter, we enter them into the HMIS system. They sign a waiver allowing us to do that because the HMIS system has their social security numbers, their birth dates, a lot of personal information. We don't share that information. It just goes into the HMIS system. Everybody is required to fill out a housing application. If they don't have their birth certificate, we send them to the MOJO. And Ms. Becky, if the MOJO, if they're not born here in Wheeling, then Ms. Becky can get it out of town. So we have MOUs with them and Ms. Becky will go and get our folks from out of town their birth certificates. As far as social security, I come in in the daytime and I will personally drive our guests up to the social security office to get their social security numbers. Housing applications, they go to Wheeling Housing Authority. As soon as, as soon as we get there, we get them in. We do everything we can to get them, people pushed into housing. That is our main goal with everybody. We are a nighttime emergency shelter. We are not a permanent shelter. We are not a place to live for the rest of your life. We are all about getting in, people into housing and making things better for them. We, we have a very compassionate staff. We have the staff over there. It's not something you learn. It's something you have or you don't have. The staff that we have has so much compassion at working with the community. They don't do it for the money. They're there because their hearts are there. That's the reason why I'm there. I don't do it for money. I do it because my heart is in it. It's very important to us to get people into housing. It takes a long time to get people into housing. There's, there's barriers for housing. We've worked with, I've worked with, personally with landlords trying to get them in if they don't qualify for housing. So we go above and above and beyond to do whatever we can to get people into housing. That is our first and foremost goal with our guests.
So, did you, you, did you understand the benchmarks that they're, we're putting out there?
I understand. We have.
So then my follow-up question is if you understand, is that something that you can meet?
Well, see, I don't know because, this is what I don't know about. Because with the agreement with the Salvation Army, it's a six-month agreement. We don't want to sign up for a six-month agreement and only be funded for six to eight weeks. Not, that's not total funding. That's help with the funding. So we have the facilities use agreement and you're, you're proposing to give us the $25,000, okay? But now, now lies the, the rest of it. We can't make it with that much money. I mean, we're going to have other funders. We're trying to get other, other funding as well. This opioid money is supposed to help the, the lower income and the homeless population is what I'm thinking. So, I mean, this is what, it's not, it's not helping, it's helping the Life Hub help other people. It's not just, if you don't, if you don't, I'm sorry, if you don't, if you don't know the job, then don't, don't make comments about. I don't know how to be a police officer, so I'm not gonna, I'm not going to downgrade the police officers' jobs or anything like that. If I don't know what they're doing, then I'm not going to sit there and be rude about it. I'm not.
That's fair.
If I may, the city manager has received reports in the past from other providers who have received some of the opioid funds in regard to progress reports. It appears that just in a generic way that those reports would include many of the things, if not all the things that Councilman Seidler stated. Would that be something that you can provide?
Yeah, we could provide that. The last one, I think we had, I'm not sure, don't put me, but I think we had $10,000 getting close from the city. And George Smoger came in and did a report because we believe in transparency and wanted to tell council what we did with that money, however much it was. I'm not the finance person.
Okay, so let me ask a couple of questions. I'm sure you can appreciate my rudeness by, you know, making sure that we're making smart decisions with the money we continue to throw at this problem.
That's fine, I understand.
When we're up to 70 people from 15 last year.
Right.
So I may not know it, but I know that's the wrong direction, right?
It, it is the wrong direction. A lot of stuff has changed, like the drugs have changed, the incomes have changed, the rent has changed. Everything has changed. People are, are sent here from all over the place and I don't, I don't understand, you know, I don't understand that part of it. I don't, but, you know, I, we can't control what happens out there. We have structure at the hub. We have rules at the hub. We have rules and consequences. They don't like rules, but you know what? If you don't follow them, then there's consequences for your actions.
But I mean, are there? I mean, we have businesses downtown that are ready to close up because of the amount of crimes happening, like 7-Eleven. You know, explain that as 7-Eleven.
I don't know. I forget 7-Eleven. I don't know.
My first question is, is what's your success rate on housing placement?
Oh, just this week, we've gotten two into housing. One is a couple, so that's a man and woman. And we got another one in, over on the island, so that's another one. We got one into rehab, I forget my numbers. I have them in my phone. We got one into rehab. We push these people. We don't, my, our first question, where are you at on your housing? Because we know we picked it, we know that we've done the application with them. They have come back. We get the response. Now they need this. They need, some of them might owe a little debt. So now we gotta go try to find money to pay this debt so we can get them into housing. It, it, every case is different. Not, they're not all the same.
Yeah, and you can see my question in logic, $150,000 divided by 30 people is five grand a person, right?
Yeah, I, I get that. I understand that.
So, go ahead.
But there's nobody who's going to go and, I mean, if you give 30 people $5,000, how many of them are going to go get housing with it?
Oh, I'm not saying to hand them a check for $30,000. I'm saying we need to continue to focus on, heavily on getting them housing. I'm not basing this success rate, I'm not basing this criteria on you. What's that?
That is our main focus on the housing.
Great, and that's, that's my point. I'm not saying that you're going to be successful in getting a person housed in one month. I understand there's a long waiting list. What I'm asking for is proof, I don't need their PII, their PI information. I don't need their personal information. I don't need their social security numbers. What I'm asking for is proof and certification that half of the individuals in this facility, right, have applications started to get their IDs and get their housing.
Well, they all do. So we have files if you want to come over and look at our files.
So then you can't comply with what he's requesting. So you can't.
You understand this. You can't do this.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have, yeah, we keep track of everything.
Okay, I also want to be clear here. I don't think anybody on council, maybe we can, maybe we can make an amendment. I'm not going to make that yet. Let's talk about it out loud. I don't think there's any intent of not funding the $7,000, $75,000 we're, $75,000 we're talking about here. I think the point that we're trying to make here is, is if, if we're not making progress, we don't want to continue to fund that. I think that we can maybe perhaps make an amendment to this, that we can allocate that $75,000 payable in three increments, assuming these milestones are met. I'm just not interested in writing another $75,000 check.
I get that.
Increase, continues to increase our homeless population.
Yeah, I get that. I don't want to spend money without getting receipts myself, so I understand that completely.
The concern I have is we have so many people coming from out of town. How do we make sure that the ones that actually live here are being taken in?
That's what, that's, well, that's another thing that we have started. In the summertime, it wasn't so bad, you know? So now if we get calls from other areas, we, we just apologize. We can't, we can't take them. We can't bring more to our chaos, you know? We, we try to direct them other, other places. When the one in Steubenville closed, when they closed, they had placed everybody that was in their shelter except for one, and they called us and asked us if we could take him. And I asked them to find, if they could find another place, but if they could not, use us as a last resort. But she ended up calling and finding that one guy, that last, that last guy that placed the stay.
Yeah, I just don't want, you know, our residents, you know, even though they're homeless, to be left out when they're, they're bringing them from Beckley and all over.
And I'm not so sure how many actually are going to come down from the camps.
Everybody's coming out of the camp.
I know they're coming out of the camp. I know that, I don't know how many of them, let me rephrase. I don't know how many of them are going to come to the love hub or trying to come to the hubs. We, you know, we, we have a great working relationship with a lot of the partners. The police have been wonderful. The fire department's been wonderful. I mean, I love when they do their walkthroughs. I do. And so it's, it's, it's been good. It's, I mean, we've had a lot of cooperation and we've been trying to cooperate as well. I know we have a couple of problems with children, but, you know.
So will the couples be at the Life Hub at the church?
No, we're not, no.
Or it's just going to be?
It's women at the Salvation Army and men at the Life Hub. I mean, we can, we, and it's, it's the same rules that, that there is there, that they have, we have to keep the same rules because we're not going to cater the rules to individual people. I mean, I know each case is different, but it, it's still the same rules and that's, the structure works.
So the women at the Life Hub now, they'll move up to the Salvation Army?
We have 10 currently, right now. And like I said, the structure, if you put structure into something, it, it, it works. So we've gone a long way with the Life Hub and with our people. We, you know, we're, can't do every single one because you know you're going to have the one here and one there, but we, we try. We do.
I have to say, and I want to tell council, I've been down there to the shelter. She has done a remarkable, remarkable job down there. She showed me the sign and she, she walked me through, showed me everything, and I'm glad that you will be ever seeing us.
Thank you. And I invite any of you down to come take a tour or see how we operate. When yet, Connie came down and we did, we did a walkthrough and I showed her we have assigned beds. You're in that bed every night. And our bed availability, I post on things every day just so other agencies can know. We don't have any women beds. We don't have, you know, any specialty beds. Because we do keep specialty beds. The police have been bringing in actually quite a few DV victims lately with nowhere else to go. And they'll bring them in in the middle of the night and we're okay with that. But the other ones have to be in, they do have to be in by a certain time.
How many individuals at the Life Hub today are from Wheeling versus Valera versus, you know, all the neighboring towns up and down the river?
We did a poll in the beginning of October. I realize that we're in, you know, middle of November now. But when we had, out of the 36 people there, we had 25 from Ohio County. The rest of them were from West Virginia and two were from Ohio, just somewhere in West Virginia. But that number has dropped. We have, and if we can, we can guide them back home. We have a kid now leaving to go back to Beckley because he got dropped off here from a hospital.
How many people have there now?
We have, we have, we have 54 beds. We have 37 male beds. We have 10 female beds and four specialty beds. We have 51 beds, I'm sorry. And our original plan, when we heard about the camp closing, was to use our third floor for an extra 10 beds. It's just, it's not feasible to run three floors. That building wasn't set up for a shelter. It was set up for a church. It, you know, so we're, that's why the Salvation Army would be, it's a, it's a newly renovated building. It's, it holds 35 people. We were only asking for beds for 30, but they have everything. You can walk in.
So we got 51 total beds there and 51 beds are full as of now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and you, every one of those individuals is in the HMIS system?
Yes, they are.
So do we not have information on it, on their last name addresses in there?
Yeah, there's, there's things like, yeah, if they, if they're willing to provide it. Not all of those people will provide it.
Any information or just, or?
We've had a couple that wouldn't give us any information. You know, Jack Daniels and Jim Bean, those people have not given us. But we have a lot of people that just, since we've opened our doors November 1st of last year, we've had 650 different individuals come. Some of them are just one night. come. Some of them are just one-night, one-hit wonders, I call them. But some of them just come in passing by. Some of them, you know, like I said, come in on a domestic, so eventually they go back home. It, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a permanent solution for housing. It's a temporary shelter, and that's why we stay on them. And I always laugh and joke because.
I hear that. I just, you know, you can appreciate what we've said for the last two years, that our camp is not a permanent solution, right?
It's not. It's not. And I understand your, your.
Absolutely being treated like one, right?
Excuse me?
The camp is absolutely, absolutely being treated like a permanent housing solution.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so when did you say you opened the doors? November what?
So, last year we opened November 1st, and we stayed open until March 30, March 30 or 31st. And then we closed our doors to men, but we kept women. And then we kept a few vulnerable men that had some health issues that I didn't think would make it in the camp. So it ended up being we have, us having more men than women. And then we got the funds to stay open year-round. And I was really surprised that in the summertime we had as many as we did, but most of those people are gone.
One thing, when I had came down, we had spoken, and you had talked about Sunday in the winter months, that you may let them stay in as a warm shelter. Is that still on the table?
Yeah, so with everything closing on the weekends, the library on, I think the library on Sunday and all the other nonprofits, we were talking about doing a daytime warming center on the weekends. We do have an Americor Vista that we got, who's starting a day program for life skills. So this life skills plan will teach them financial things. It'll teach them cooking, making a bed, because you'd be surprised. I make them make their beds, and you'd be surprised how many people don't have to put a fitted sheet on. So it's just the difference, the skills that they'll need when they actually get into housing.
What are the mental health resources or, what are the resources programs you guys offer?
So we, we go with, we're, an MOU with Northwood Behavioral Health. So we do, we do take a lot of people up there. If Northwood can't take them, we are on the phone all over trying to send them out of our area. So I know that a lot of people said, so I get it, why, you know, we, we try to send people out of the area of Reno, because they've done it here before, and when you come out to the same people in the same environment, it doesn't work for them.
Believe it or not, I know that. I actually know way more about this than you might think I know.
Right. So, so that's why I think it's good to send them out of the area. So maybe that's why we were getting so many people from out of the area, because they didn't fare well where they came from, so.
All right, so what's the, what's, what's your success rating for people to agree to go to either a mental health?
When they're ready, we're on it. We, we move so fast, because you know you've got that small window of opportunity, and if you don't get them somewhere now, then they're not going to go. And the problem that we have is, oh, this place don't have any beds. This place won't take your insurance. This place is, you know, only, you know, it's just so many barriers.
Well, I mean, we, the city of Wheeling personally negotiated a contract with the Northwood Health Systems to guarantee placement with that. So is that not happening? Because the Northwood promises us, made a commitment to us, that they would not turn anybody away.
Well, I've had, well, I've had one girl tell me that she was turned away. I don't know. I didn't walk her in. I drove her up, dropped her off. She might have just been saying that, so I can't speak for Northwood.
So that's only one person in there?
That was, no, that was one, the one that told me, yeah.
So, how often are these individuals being encouraged to make a change in their life? That they've got a better life ahead of them? That this isn't what their life is defined by? That they can make this change? Is that happening every single day?
It, it happens every day, because a lot of our employees have lived experience, and, and a majority of them are in recovery, so they know, and they're doing well, and they're, and they push it. They, if I can do it, you can do it. I've lived on the streets. I was here. This is what you can do. I did this. You can do this. So it's a lot of cheerleading and, and pushing. We don't just sit back and, you know, sorry, watch them sleep and babysit.
And actually, actually, I'm going to comment. She's at the Life Hub, and she's helping, but there's a lot of nonprofits out here that need to also be helping out. This can't always just all be on her.
I agree. There's a lot of six-figure executives out here in nonprofit organizations.
Right. You, you have to hip hop, and I know from talking to you and going down and everything you showed me and everything, that you're doing your job.
I'm dancing. I'm there dancing. I'm there nice. I'm there whatever I have to be.
But, you know, there's a lot of people out here. We need them to step up and help out.
Right, thank you. You're, you're absolutely.
And as far as Northwood, you already know how I feel about Northwood. I work for the public defender's office, and our clients get turned away. But, you know, that's another situation. Even after we agreed, I called you and told you that they turned my guy away, but.
My point is, we've written a lot of checks. They've gone nowhere. We wrote a lot of checks last year. We've written a lot of checks over the last six years. How many, again, how many people are in our homeless camp right now? Two weeks before it closes. How many people are there?
Last I heard was in the seventies. And, oh, so we are going to do a resource fair like they did out there. So Monday, at six o'clock, we're going to do a resource fair for our people, so all the nonprofits can come and whatever they can help them with and steer them and guide them. We're going to have that Monday on the 24th at 6:00 p.m. in our, in our shelter. So that way we can help, we can get some external help from the people in the community for our people staying at the hub.
So I'm not against, to the members of council here, I'm not against allocating the $75,000. I'm against writing a blanket check if progress doesn't happen. I don't know if anybody else here cares about that. If not, I'm one vote. But if we do, we'll structure that in a way that makes sure we have people accountable. Because I'm really sick of hearing a whole lot of promises and hearing a whole lot of talking and lip smacking, and our homeless population increasing instead of these people getting the help needed. I mean, I feel like what you asked, she started doing.
So why don't we?
But it sounds like to me that they need an actual commitment of that money as opposed to eight weeks.
Seven, are you saying basically it's a commitment of $75,000 of funds with a, with the payments allocated within every two months?
$25,000.
Yes.
As long as they continue to provide the progress.
Yeah, to provide progress.
All right, I will make a motion to amend the ordinance for that, so that we allocate all $75,000. We'll cut them three checks, as long as they come back two separate times and provide the progress notes that they're doing, which she said they can do and are doing, then we can allocate the funds. Does that, does that make sense?
Does that meet your requirements?
Yeah, and, and I would like to add, we also have to pay rent, pay our utilities, pay for the insurance, because we need insurance there too. So we have to do all of our overhead payments as well, so.
That's point of order. I, I, I just, I just amended it again. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, would you have a second for that amendment? Is there any further discussion on that amendment?
And can, can I have Counselor Osaro to withdraw your first amendment?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And then we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Sklaven-Akats, and a second by Counselor Fornate for that amendment. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Okay, then let's go back to the original, the original second reading with the, with the amendment there. Do we need two readings for that? Two, two again? A first and a second with the amendment. So we go back to ground zero. We, we, we have to have an original.
We have to vote on the amendment as well.
We have to vote on the amendment.
Well, let's vote on the amendment first. So you, you heard the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment has stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that amendment's been approved. Now I think we have to circle back to this proposition to the ordinance, and have a motion and a second for a first reading, since we've amended it, and then a motion and a second for a second reading.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of a second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, we have a second reading. Now we'll entertain a motion for that second reading.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Any discussion on that one? So let's make it clear that we're, we're voting on the amended ordinance now that we would, $75,000 in three $25,000 payments with periodic upgrades and information from the Life Hub. And I, and I would only like to say that I for one, and I know council wants to say thank you to the Life Hub and to the Salvation Army for stepping up to try to be part of a real solution to these problems. We want to be part of that. So with that, the motion's on the floor. We're going to ask, please to record your votes.
Do we have to read it for a second?
I'm going to say I still need to do the second reading.
She needs to read it for a second.
Okay, Jess, you're going to have three to per second, please.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Wheeling, West Virginia, authorizing the city manager to allocate a portion of the West Virginia opioid settlement funds to assist the Life Hub and Salvation Army in Wheeling, West Virginia, for temporary housing to the unsheltered community and providing opioid-related abatement, as amended on the floor.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Any discussion? All those, please record your vote.
I vote yes.
Okay. It's unanimous vote, and that motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from council here at this time? If not, we're going to move on to the those wishing to be heard section of our agenda, and we